All the meetings to order. Roll call, please. Vice Mayor Farmer?
Here.
Councilmember Sandu?
Here.
Councilmember Campion? Councilmember Lozano?
Here.
Mayor Lamson?
Here.
Please stand for the silent prayer. And we want to take a moment to think about Councilmember Campion, who lost his mother this week, and that's why he is absent from this council.
Salute pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we play the statement, please?
This meeting of the Galt City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the Local Government Affairs Channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications, and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will air Friday, March 22nd at 9:00 a.m., and Saturday, March 23rd at 9:00 a.m. The city council meeting videos are also archived on the city's website. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch.
Thank you. Are there any agenda approval additions and/or deletions?
I'd like to pull F5.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay. We have no presentations. Donna, can you read the public comment?
Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the city council on non-agenda items. The public comments section is for the city council to receive comments. Except for brief responses to questions, no discussion or action may be taken on any item that is not listed on the agenda. Please limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Speaker cards are located on the table inside the entrances to the council chambers. Once completed, forward the speaker card to the clerk. Those persons wishing to speak on any items scheduled on the agenda will be given an opportunity to do so at the time that item is being considered.
Thank you. Reports by city council members on regional boards, commissions, and committees. Vice Mayor Farmer?
Nothing.
Councilmember Sandu?
Yes, last week, I believe on March 14th, Thursday, I went to attend Sacramento Transportation STA Authority Meeting. That's my first time to on that meeting, and they discussed the main thing they discuss, unmet transportation needs. From the different cities, from Algro, from Folsom, and City of Ranch October, they did the good presentation, what their needs are, and how they will work together. And I believe is next meeting in April 11, 2019. At that time, I think Citrus High, Galt, and Sacramento, they're going to do their presentation, what unmet needs of transportation of these cities. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sandu. Councilmember Lozano?
Nothing to report, just that on Thursday, this Thursday, the 21st, we have our next SACOG Board Meeting, so I'll report back at the next meeting from that.
Okay. Councilmember Lozano and I did attend a planning commission meeting, and that was very informative on some things that are upcoming. We appreciate all that. It was a very well-attended meeting. All right. Information consent calendar. So I need a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of March 5, 2019, and special meeting of March 8, 2019. Receive and file warrants for period ending March 7, 2019. Treasurer's report for the period ending January 2019. Amendment number one to chemical supply contract.
I'll make a motion to approve items 1 through 4.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
I will do the second.
Okay. Motion made by Councilmember Lozano, seconded by Councilmember Sandu. Roll call vote, please. Vice Mayor Farmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Lamson?
Aye.
Motion passes 4-0. Next up is the reallocation of Unspent Transportation Development Act funding. I believe that was pulled by Vice Mayor Farmer.
Yeah, I just didn't get a chance to really go over this before the meeting, so I just wanted to get clarification. It mentions that this is going to go back to the '09, the money will be reallocated to the '09 fund, and then it says there'll be a presentation by city engineer for the 2019 street and pedestrian improvement, so some kind of presentation of what this money would be used for, is my understanding?
Hold on. Jean, would you like to direct somebody to answer that? Okay, thank you.
Yes, Vice Mayor Farmer. This money, basically, the way it works under the Transportation Development Act is each city or county gets, you know, their share, and once all of our transit needs have been fulfilled, if there's any remaining revenues, then we can reprogram that to streets and roads purposes. So that's what we would propose to do as far part of the mid-year budget is for next year's streets and roads projects, so.
Okay. I just had some questions from the public that I wanted to clarify. Thank you. That's all I had.
Any other questions on that? Take that as a no. All right. Can I get a motion to approve the reallocation of Unspent Transit Transportation Development Act funding?
So moved.
Second?
I'll do second.
Moved by Vice Mayor Farmer, seconded by Councilmember Lozano. Roll call vote, please. Vice Mayor Farmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Lamson?
Aye.
Motion passes 4 to 0. Do we have any scheduled matters? No. And the regular calendar, city manager's office?
Ms. Mendez will be presenting the next two items. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor. Members of the city council, Amy Mendez, Economic Development Manager. Items H1 and H2 are somewhat related, and so the presentation's going to cover both of those items. First, I will run through H1, which is in regards to the foreclosure proceedings, and so just some background, which kind of ties both of these projects together. Let me make sure this is turned on. So the item this evening is in regards to the Fairway Oaks project, and some additional properties that are being proposed to be included as part of this project. Arcadia Homes is the developer on this project. They have a besting tentative map that was approved for this in November of 2012. Most recently last month, they received another extension, and so this tentative map is set to expire in 2020. The project itself, as it stands, is located just west of Highway 99, east of the Creekside Two Development, and is approximately 43 acres. This includes 100 residential lots ranging from 8,000 to 18,000 square feet. The Fairway Oaks project is zoned R1C, which is single-family residential development. It's somewhat of an infill site located on the west side of the freeway. The project constraints right now, as it stands, with the 100-unit subdivision is there are some costly environmental mitigations that need to be done on the site. There are a limited number of units that can fit. You'll see sort of the open space requirement there on the east side of the property. Glendale access is a requirement from the planning commission, and so there is going to have to be an entrance from Glendale that has to be purchased somewhere for access to this subdivision. And then, I think most importantly, is the Cornell Road improvements and some of the access that leads to the development as it stands, because it does go through the County Island. So there are some significant right-of-way issues there that need to be addressed. And then mostly, I think we've heard this from a lot of the developers lately, just rising costs of construction, materials, and labor. And so there are some constraints on the site as it sits with regard to the Fairway Oaks project that was approved in 2012 originally. Hasn't developed, it's been sitting there for the last couple of years, and there's some adjacent property that could potentially help spur this project and get it moving forward. And so Arcadia Development, too, is the applicant on the project. They approached the city, gosh, I don't know, a year ago maybe, in regards to a piece of property they were looking to acquire to encompass as part of the Fairway Oaks project. And the project itself is to the east of this 52 parcel, is kind of what we have named it. The applicant, Arcadia, quickly discovered that this land, when they were doing their due diligence, is encumbered with about $350,000 in past due city assessments for water and sewer bonds, which includes interest, attorney's fees, and penalties that have accrued on the property. The assessments have not been paid on this property since 1996, so it has been delinquent for some time. The city has attempted foreclosure on the property on several occasions through the foreclosure process. However, the property value is roughly $60,000 an acre, and the assessments right now are around $350,000, so it's never sold at foreclosure auction. The history on the bond issuance as it relates to this property is back to 1990. So initially, there were, and it's funny, because in doing the research, Fairway Oaks is called out as a project in 1990 as part of this, and still hasn't developed, and so that just goes to show some of the constraints that are on the site as it sits. In 1990, there were 4.8 million in bonds issued for water improvements. That issuance Assessment District 1990-2 was refinanced in 1992 and added some additional financing for sewer improvements. So that total bond issuance was $6 million. In 1991, the 1992 district, along with lots of other districts in the city, were refinanced into 1999-1 Assessment District. This property, as I mentioned, hadn't been current on assessment since 1996. So in 2015, the city did a reassessment of several assessment districts within the city, and because this was so delinquent, the parcel was removed from the reassessment district. So it's not tied to any assessment districts at this point in time. This parcel shown sort of on the zoning map here to the west of the Arcadia project is likely never to develop without some type of city involvement, considering the assessments that have accrued on the property. Arcadia doesn't propose to incorporate this two-acre parcel as part of their development. It's zoned for single-family residential already, and really, in terms of the city's benefit, this helps us avoid some piecemeal development out there and eliminates a problem assessment property. We have a couple of them within the city that, this is a first for us, kind of going through this process, so it's a learning curve for Kimberly and I, but we're making some progress here. And so we do have some proceedings that we can go through as a city in order to purchase this property and resell it. And so the government code allows us to do a credit bid process. Essentially, we were to foreclose on the property and issue a credit bid at foreclosure auction, basically crediting ourselves for the past due assessments. So we would go through this process, foreclose, offer the credit bid, and we would purchase the property at foreclosure auction. Our out-of-pocket expenses for this would be roughly $20,000, and that's past due ad warum taxes and fees associated with the foreclosure. To facilitate this transfer of property, basically, what Arcadia has proposed is that they, we would go through the foreclosure proceeding, purchase the property, and immediately turn it over to Arcadia for market value essentially. So there's an MOU that's included as part of the packet tonight, which facilitates the actions both of the city and of the developer in terms of the foreclosure sale, the credit bid process, and the purchase transaction moving forward. So essentially, Arcadia agrees to pay the market value for the property, which is $120,000, and they would purchase that, they would place the funds, the $120,000, into escrow prior to the city going to the foreclosure auction. So we would have the funds already moving through the foreclosure process. Essentially, Arcadia would take ownership of the property, and then that would be kind of the end of the deal. Once we take ownership, we transfer it to Arcadia for the $120,000, and the proceeds that would remain from that would go through to the water and sewer funds for the city, since that's what the initial bond issuance was for. So the financial breakdown as it stands would be that Arcadia would purchase the property for $120,000, which is market value of $60,000 an acre. We would have to pay the ad warum taxes and fees out of that $120,000. There's foreclosure legal fees associated with this, so New Miller and Beardsley has been the city's foreclosure counsel, going back decades now on this property, and then we have special counsel that would have to deal with the, we've already been working with them, actually, and putting the MOU together. And then the proceeds that would be remaining would be roughly $64,000. And that $36,000 foreclosure legal fee is kind of a really high estimate, we just ballparked it, not really knowing what we were going into. So $64,000 is roughly what we would estimate as a profit that would just turn around and go into the city's water and sewer. So the recommendation this evening on item H1 is that the city approve the MOU and sell the property to Arcadia as part of the Fairway Oaks project. As mentioned, this property is zoned for single-family development. This avoids some piecemeal development in that area, and it eliminates a problem assessment property that's been on the books for a very long time. The second part of that would be for direction to proceed with foreclosure proceedings on the property, and basically, we would eliminate that delinquent assessment that's been sitting there since 1996. And really, I don't know who else is going to develop this in terms of the assessment value versus what the market value is. So that would be the recommendation this evening, and Kim was grabbing her microphone. I think she might have something to say.
I was just going to note that we included with the resolution some language, recognizing that we have the MOU in the packet. There are some changes. I've been playing phone tag with Arcadia's attorney, and so we may have some minor changes to that, so I just wanted to note that we haven't completely pinned down all of that language and sorting out, because there's still some title issues we're sorting out with that for the language in the agreement. But it is essentially, all the deal points that Amy walked through have been agreed upon.
So that would be the action for item H1, and I think that you might want to take public comment, ask questions, and then we'll move on to item H2.
What happened?
Related to the city property.
Thank you. Looks like a lot of hard work on a...
It's a lot of background information to dig out from 2019-90 when the bonds were issued.
Wow.
Tracking the bonds were the toughest part, kind of where this parcel landed, knowing that that assessment was still outstanding.
The parcel's two acres?
Two acres.
Okay. Is there any discussion by the council?
Just, so, as you know, Amy, we met on this, and I also met with Chris and did a lot of research on this, and so the only questions I really had, which I had already brought up, well, actually, I didn't bring them up, was the $20,000 to the county for the valorum taxes and the $36,000 to BBK, those are estimates, right? I mean, could be give or take. I don't see any major sways?
The property tax right now, as it stands, is roughly $16,000, and the foreclosure fees are pretty minimal. There are liens on the property that are code enforcement liens that we essentially could basically waive, so that would be all that people were standing outside of the foreclosure fees.
And just to clarify to the public, I mean, this, the amount of money owed against this property, it's unlikely that it would ever be worth that. I mean, well, not ever, but that's a monstrous amount for two acres. So really, unless the city steps in and does something with this at all, there's nothing going to be done with it.
This property actually sold at foreclosure auctions through the county, 2015, I want to say, and the problem was that the purchaser of the property bought the property for roughly $30,000, because that's what was owed in back taxes, not realizing that the city assessments were tied to that property. And so they came to find out that there was $350,000 in assessments, which they just didn't do their due diligence review in the title report, is really what that came down to. So the property tax have been recently wiped clean, which is why there's roughly $16,000 outstanding. That's just the last couple of years. And some of that property tax is an assessment that needs to be stripped, so it should be even less than that.
And the roughly $64,000 in profit's going to go to the water sewer fund, and the reason that is, is because the original bonds that have piled up against this had to do with, it has to be that way, right?
Yeah.
It's not for us to say where that money goes.
Correct. As far as I've been told legally, that's where they need to land.
Yes.
Yeah.
That was my only question.
I would take them in economic development, if you want to pass them my direction.
Any other questions? All right. Is there any public comment on this property? Looks like no.
I just have one comment. Amy, I appreciate you and walking us through this ahead of time. It was a lot to wrap our heads around. But I think that, to Vice Mayor Farmer's point, you know, we're never going to recover what the assessments are on the property, and this is a way for the city kind of to get out from under that, and then even put a little bit of money into the water and sewer fund, so I think it's a good thing.
Well, and it saves a lot of staff time on finance part. They continue to have to deal with this year after year in updating the judgment and the assessment, so.
Yeah. Thank you, though, for that briefing ahead of time.
Yeah.
All right. If that's it, can I get a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the city to proceed with purchase of property APN 150-0101-052 at foreclosure sale by credit bid for unpaid assessments and further approving a memorandum of understanding with Arcadia Development Company for the sale of that property to Arcadia Development Company for $120,000, and authorizing the city manager to execute the MOU and other documents necessary to complete the transaction, and further authorizing the city manager and city attorney to make needed or desired minor changes to the MOU, remaining fully within the council's overall intent.
Sorry, that was a mouthful.
Were we going to vote on this, or were we going to let her present H2?
I just made a motion, so we're...
We vote on this, and then we'll do the next second parcel.
Can I get a motion?
I will make a motion. Can you open that?
Okay, a second?
Yes.
Okay. Motion made by Councilmember Sandu, seconded by Councilmember Lozano. Roll call vote, please. Vice Mayor Farmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Lamson?
Aye.
Motion passes 4-0. Congratulations.
Thank you. This has been a long time coming. The second property that we, this sort of tied to the Fairway Oaks project as well, is a city-owned piece of property. So Arcadia had approached the city with this dilemma on the city assessments for that two-acre parcel 52, and while we were in discussions with them, trying to sort of dig out the history of this parcel, we realized that we owned a piece of property that was adjacent to their project as well, and so we did engage with them to see if there would be interest in potentially purchasing this property. The city owns the 5.7-acre Cornell Road property, was purchased in 2002, and as far as we can tell, it was purchased with O6 funds. The idea was that this would be overflow parking for the Galt market. And in 2002, you know, the market was, I'm sure, flourishing, and so there was an idea that maybe in the future, a connection could be created through Glendale or Melody Lane to create connectivity to the 5.7-acre parcel. That's never happened, and the city's continued to maintain this property for the last 17 years. The purchase price, the city actually purchased this property through foreclosure proceedings, very similar to what we just approved, the city purchased it through foreclosure proceedings. We don't know whether it was a credit bid, you know, opportunity or not, but what we can tell from accounting records is the purchase price was $131,000 roughly. The city subsequently paid off the Assessment District, so this was tied to the same Assessment District as the two-acre parcel, and so the city, after purchasing the property, paid off that 1999-1 assessment. So the total investment is roughly $400,000 is what was put into this property. Like I said, it was intended for overflow parking and has never developed as that. So this map shows the Fairway Oaks project in reference to the city-owned property. The property is zoned R1B, which is single-family residential, very similar to the two-acre property in terms of the fact that it's really meant for single-family development at some point in the future. I've mentioned that we had engaged Arcadia, we did ask them if there would be interest, and that's sort of how we got here today. The city pursued an appraisal on the property. Market rate value came back at roughly $340,000, which is $60,000 per acre. The appraisal stated that there were some constraints to development of the site, which is the County Island being one. There's no infrastructure to the property, so there is not sewer pipe to the property, and then the water line is roughly 400 feet away, so there would be significant infrastructure improvements needed in order to connect to that property. Again, the Cornell Road access was an issue named as well in the appraisal. So Arcadia is proposing to purchase this property, the revised, they basically would revise the tentative map and resubmit encompassing the two-acre parcel that was just approved for foreclosure proceedings, as well as the 5.7-acre property. They would pursue annexation of County Island as part of this development, and that really is related to right-of-way issues with Cornell Road and trying to provide an adequate access point to the development, although this development does have three other access points, I believe. So Cornell Road isn't the only access, but it is, it has to be improved at some point, and so that is part of this with the County Island annexation. They would update the secret document as it relates to this project. And the terms of the agreement, although the property appraised at $340,000, which is $60,000 an acre, I did have conversations with Vice Mayor Farmer yesterday, and I know Chris Arias, our community development director, did as well, in regards to the purchase price and the fact that the city was selling this property less than what they had invested in it. And so we reached out to Arcadia, actually, last night, and asked if they would be willing to up their purchase price. And so they did agree, although they were hesitant because of some of the improvements that are needed on this property, they did agree to purchase the property above market value. So they're looking at $356,000 instead of a $340,000, which is roughly $62.5 per acre. They would deposit, and then the terms of the purchase and sale agreement really would be that purchase price, which is $356,000. They would initially deposit $17,000 into escrow, and Arcadia is able to terminate this PSA, and I think this is important for everybody to understand. If the PSA is not approved, not the PSA, the tentative map is not approved as part of their development, the PSA would not be valid, it would not move forward. Although, the PSA does not constitute approval of any type of this project, and so these are kind of two separate moving items. It also doesn't commit any further approval of entitlements on the site, so any of the environmental, infrastructure, whatever that may be moving forward, the city's not committed to that. And then there would be one three-month extension allowed to extend the closing. So the recommendation on this would be to approve the PSA to sell the 5.7-acre property. The city does not have a need for the property at this point, at least that we are aware of, unless somebody has any great ideas for it. It's continued to accrue maintenance costs for the last 17 years and will moving forward, and it's really unlikely that another developer is going to come forward and want to develop this as a standalone project. It's small, there's poor access, there's not infrastructure to the site, and so there are some significant constraints. And then one of the things that we've heard over and over, and I know that Chris can attest to this, is that the size of the parcel does not lend itself to a significant residential development, and so it's really hard to spread the costs amongst 20 houses, which is what would be envisioned on this property. So with this, the proceeds would go back to the Parks and Rec Fund, the O6 Fund, so everything that we collect today or from the sale of this, once the Arcadia is, project is approved, would go back into the Parks and Recreation Fund. So are there any questions?
The last dot was my question. Thank you for that. Is there any questions from the council?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. One thing is, you know, that property is belong to the city, and the Arcadia, that's the developer we offered them, make it, or we did offer somebody else to. My second question, is this the first time we're selling the property, or since we know for a long time, this property, we're not doing anything? This is the first time we're selling, or are we selling before? Any offer on this property?
So I'm not sure if there's ever, I'm guessing that there had been a plan. In 2006, there was an appraisal done on this property, and it was part of the file, and so unless Jean, our city manager, has some history to share that I'm not aware of, from what we can tell, that there was an appraisal done, and we think that there was potentially the former developer on the site maybe was looking to purchase the property as part of encompassing the Fairway Oaks project, again, same concept. Just in 2006, the value of the property was skyrocketed because of the market at that time, so, but it never, the transaction never happened.
Right. You know, this is good explanation, good explanation, but this is a community property. A lot of people ask this question. I just want to make sure clear that, because there is... a lot of question, the $60,000 acre. I know we're talking about that property not used, but now the property price is much higher than 2015, is much higher than 2010. So, that's just the question, by clarification, because if we give the offer to somebody else, we might be get more money on that, or we might be think this is a very good price, or we help the developer so they can give one project.
Well, I want to say it's, do you mind if I?
No, go for it.
It's a mixture of all of the above. Essentially, working with the developer, Arcadia, Fairway Oaks, really makes the entire project and area more viable. So, I think, as Amy mentioned, you know, there are some development constraints in that area, and then the size of a parcel itself. Residential projects of five acres and under are just getting hard for developers to come in and do all their infrastructure, pay all the fees, do all their environmental, and then make a profit on it. So, what we're seeing is, is nobody's moving on those parcels because they just can't make it work. So, it makes sense to tie it into the Fairway Oaks project and work with Arcadia. In addition to that, from a planning perspective, we always prefer more of a master plan community, so that way, we know that the parcels are all working together and not working in these isolated projects, and then it's not cohesive development. So, what's important for us is that we do get more of a master plan for that area, and I think working with Arcadia actually helps that process.
One more question. You know, when they're going to develop the other land, are they going to develop the same time with this parcel, or they can, you know, sometime develop for, you know, they develop one parcel and that's there, they just want to buy it, they're going to sit down. So, we have to have some kind of, in the agreement, so when they develop the land, they should be developed on the same parcel.
I think that's fair. I mean, typically, when we go through the tentative map process, it will identify phasing, if there is to be a phasing portion of it, so we can, you know, evaluate that through the tentative map process. Based on its size, if, you know, 100 units typically doesn't really need to be phased. If you're adding 60 units, maybe. Maybe they do it in a couple phases, but we can, then, when we do that phase in the map, you know, that will come back to you, come through planning commission for a recommendation, and then also for city council for ultimate approval, because of the annexation and rezon.
Thank you.
I have a few questions. So, yeah, some of my concerns originally were the same as Councilman Sandu's, and I spent a lot of time on this because there was a lot of public questions about, you know, the price per acre, and, you know, if somebody else would pay us more for that piece. And there was a lot of, you know, details about it, and that's why I met with Chris and Amy both. And I kind of, the simple kind of answer to the, to the, if somebody else interested, it's, you know, it's kind of like a monopoly scenario, you know? It's like, we have the one green property, somebody else has the other two green. Nobody else in the, playing in the game is going to want that single green because it's no interest to them. But the people with the two green, they want the third one so they can build their houses. So, that's why, even though it's kind of a funky property and nobody else would touch it, they would, and I don't think we should jeopardize the opportunity. But then, with that same mindset, I know that I expressed that I think that we had a little bit leverage here, and when I found out that the money was going to Parks and Recreation, which to clarify, all the money from this sale would go to the O6 Fund, that's been clarified, right?
Right.
Okay. So, you know, Parks and Recreation being what it is, and trying to, you know, get every nickel we can. I just kind of mentioned to Chris, you know, do you think that they would pay more? Chris said, I don't know. And then, Chris took it upon himself to, you know, you guys reached out, I guess, and you were able to scrape up another $16,000. So, that's great, another $16,000 for Parks and Recreation. So, I was happy to hear that. So, for me, I think the price, you know, I did talk to another real estate agent, a couple of real estate agents, and kind of just felt out the price, just kind of, because I'm no expert on what the going rate for an acre of land is. And there was another area that was recently sold for a little bit more, but it didn't have, and as you had verified, and I did verify that with this other person, that it doesn't have the, this one is challenged with utility and things like that. So, it wasn't, it wasn't as easy as the other properties. So, I was told that it was fair, at the 60, and then we're getting 62.5 now, so. And then, personally, I mean, I support this myself, because, you know, I look at it as an infill. I really do. I feel like if you look at the map, it's a puzzle piece that goes right there. This is something, just to be clear, this is something that was already, you know, the land was bought in 2002, they had tentative maps approved in 2012, so this has been an ongoing thing. I think that the developer obviously is just waiting for the economy to be, and then, if they could get their hands on this other piece to make it viable. So, for me, I support it for that reason. I think it's, I think it would, it's going to be a good thing. I like to see, you know, if there is going to be any development, I like to see on the west side a little bit, because everything tends to be on the east side. We don't get enough over here. It seems like it's, Chris had mentioned something about the hope that that would help improve the area around, like Melody and Glendale and areas, would help the property values, or just the area, would just kind of bring it up because of, because of the new development. So, these are the reasons, I, so I generally, I support it for all these reasons. I support it because of the money going to Parks and Recreation. I support it because it's, I think it's an infill, and I'm a big supporter of infill development. The one last question I have before I check out on this is that the, what do you think the timeframe is realistically, in your opinion, before this moves forward and they have to submit all their new, I mean, realistically, where we start seeing, you know, nails being swabbed?
At least a couple of years. Probably, I would estimate two to four years before you actually see any construction. We're estimating that the maps will come through to city council after the SECA process at the end of the year. So, they get the approvals at the end of the year, and they start working on infrastructure. Actually, I take that back. It includes an annexation for the island, so that could take another year. So, you're looking at two years of entitlement process at a minimum, just to go in and get the project annexed. Then, that third year, you're probably working on infrastructure. Maybe the fourth year, if you're lucky, you're pounding nails, going vertical, maybe. In a good economy, everything going well.
Also, too, I think I might have mentioned it, but, you know, this, obviously, we're upside down on this property. I mean, it probably sounds like a good deal when we bought it, but, you know, we, for whatever reason, that's all came before all of us that are sitting here. You know, it was a bad, looking back, it was a bad decision. So, you know, we're trying to just get out from under this and move on, and get some money back, you know, where we can use it to the community. And so, that's how I feel about it. Thanks.
And just to touch on the value component, I did check with Public Works to determine how far infrastructure would need to be brought in. And I mentioned the water line was roughly 300 feet away. The sewer line is roughly 1,000 feet. And Bill Forrest, our city engineer, mentioned that that looks roughly, just, you know, rough cost estimate is $85,000 to $140,000. So, just to bring infrastructure to that piece of property. So, that really is what's devaluing the property as it sits right now.
Councilmember Lozano, anything?
I don't want to repeat everything my colleagues have said, but I just think that at this point, it's probably a good idea to, you know, strike while there aren't taught, and get out from under the continuous draw on our funds for the property. And again, I think the monopoly analogy is a good one. You know, you'll have somebody there to actually develop it, so.
Thank you. Very nice job. Is there any public comments on the Fairway Oaks project? And then, I need to get a motion to adopt a resolution approving a purchase and sale agreement with Arcadia Development Company for the sale of 5.7 acres of city-owned property, APN 150-0101-050, located on Cornell Road for, yeah, 356?
356,000. There is an amended, updated resolution on the dais and in the back of the room reflecting the new price.
All right, 356,000, and, oh, this one. Let me read that one instead. Authorizing city manager to execute the purchase and sale agreement and other documents necessary to complete the transaction. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Lozano, seconded by Councilmember, Vice Mayor Farmer. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Farmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Lamson?
Aye. Motion passes 4-0. Next.
Can I, this is, yeah. Mayor Lamson, this is Mike Oliver. He's representing Arcadia Homes, so.
Well, just, yeah, well, thank you, obviously. I thought I'd be up here getting grilled for 20 minutes, so.
Sorry. We can do that.
You guys know, but, you know, it's been, I want to say, a long process. As you know, we entitled the first map here a number of years ago and have gone through a number of iterations trying to make it work. It's a complicated situation, as you all said. Part of it is that annexation piece, because the county controls the right-of-way on Cornell. And so, trying to work through the process, and we did, I think, a competent job with the city staff, but then we have to go through the county, and the city doesn't control that right-of-way until it's annexed, which is a crucial part, and that is affecting the developability of that property. Because what used to happen is, at the boom, the public developers would go out and they'd buy a piece of dirt and take it all the way through the process and make a lot of money. Well, nowadays, since that things fell apart, you have to have it ready to go. And when I say ready to go, there's a, you know, 10-page checklist that they have to check before their underwriters are going to let them close on a piece of property. And so, the stakes or the threshold has gotten much higher. Also, would just like to say thank you to the staff under the able leadership of the city manager, working with Chris and Amy here. It's been a joy. We do a lot of work in the Santa Fe area and the Bay Area, and coming here has just been great, because not only have I worked with the staff here for about four years so far, but then, to have this, make it more possible for us is wonderful. So, we appreciate everybody's work and especially your support. So, thank you.
Well, thank you very much. All right. Next on the agenda is the Community Development Department, our annual 2030 General Plan and Housing Element Progress Report for 2018. It's a very large document.
It is. And there's going to be a test to make sure.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Chris Arias, Community Development Director. The item you have before you, as mentioned, is the Annual General Plan and Housing Element Progress Report. I always like to start with this slide because it shows probably one of the most important maps that the city has, and that's the General Plan Land Use and Circulation map. And it shows basically the boundaries in which the city is pre-approved to grow. So, looking at that map, you could see that our boundary and future growth goes, extends above Twin Cities, along Highway 99, east to Cherokee, and then west to Sargent. So, ultimately, the idea at 2030 is that the build-out would look like this, that this is the city's build-out plan. This plan was approved in 2009. We had over 50 public meetings on this general plan to actually come to this land use plan. The land use plan that was debated at the time included land west of the city. It was much bigger, but this was a compromise with a lot of different groups, local agencies, local property owners, environmentalists, to come up with this ideal for growth. So, this is what guides our department and where we're going to grow. So, all of the work that you see us do is typically consistent with what we're doing there. So, to me, it's always a great way to start this presentation. So, the state requires the filing of this report, and it goes to the State Office of Planning and Research, or OPR, and that's the state planning wing. Then, the State Department of Housing and Community Development, or HCD, also requires an update to this general plan. This report contains the status of each of the general plan elements, progress in implementing the general plan items, and then progress in meeting our fair share of the city's regional housing requirements. And to me, the regional housing requirements is probably the important part of the document, and I'll talk about that a little bit later. The Galt 2030 general plan includes 10 chapters or elements. Each of these will list a set of goals with set policies to help achieve each goal. The state mandates seven elements. Those are land use, circulation, housing, conservation, open space, noise, and safety. Cities can add elements that they feel worthy. The city added public facilities and services, community character, economic development, and historic uses. So, those are added elements to the city's general plan. If you note on that screen, all of the elements were adopted with the general plan in 2009, except the housing element. The housing element has the distinction of being the only element that is required to be updated on a regular basis. And it's the state's attempt to make sure we're keeping up with housing production requirements and that our housing policies change with changing state requirements. So, most of the report, the first part of it, will focus on the 10 elements and then progress toward meeting the elements. So, looking at the screen, this is a sample. I mean, we'd be here all day if we went over every policy, but I just used land use as an example because that's where I live. So, that first policy on the upper hand left is basically sphere of influence. The general plan policy required us to amend the SOI, or sphere of influence, to be consistent with the general plan, because prior to this general plan, we did not go north of Twin Cities. So, our SOI needed to be amended to be consistent with it. So, this was completed in 2011. That next item is the Habitat Conservation Plan. The requirement was that the city work with Sacramento County in the conservation plan. And I think, as you all know, you got, the city council adopted the plan last year, and so, we are a full participant along with Rancho Cordova and Sac County. So, that policy has been achieved, and we met that requirement. The next one is landscape, landscaping and lighting districts, and the requirement is that the city investigate a citywide landscape and lighting district, basically to pay for landscape maintenance. So, we've done a couple of things on that item. One is, we're in the process of creating a citywide community facilities district, basically to pay for landscape maintenance. And the idea is that all new development will be going into this CFD, or Community Facilities District, to pay for landscape maintenance. And then, the other item, I think you're aware, we hired a consultant to review the areas of the city that does not have an LLD and look at the possibility of figuring out how to get those into an LLD. And then, that last one that I showed there is just an Annual General Plan Progress to show that. This report fulfills that policy. We do have a new reporting mechanism for this document. The state is getting a little bit more serious on how we report out housing production. So, HCD has created this new table or Excel spreadsheet that was included in your packet, and it's a little bit difficult to see. I think it was really designed more for internal use, not necessarily for external. But what is new is Table A. That shows applications the city has that are ready for entitlement public hearings. And we only had one at the time of this writing, that was Parlin Oaks. So, that's the only application that is shown in Table A. Table A2 is some new, some old, and I'll talk about that in a minute. Table B, Table C, they're also, well, not also, but they are carryovers, and I'll talk about them as we go forward. The other tables really didn't apply to the city, so I'm not going to spend time on them. And then, the last summary just provides a comprehensive summary of all the tables included. So, the first table I wanted to talk about is A2. I know you can't see that, because I can't, but I wanted to put it up on the screen and point out what is new. And what is new on this reporting mechanism is for us to show all our entitled projects. So, what this table includes is everything that has a tentative map on it. And we're roughly showing about 2,300 units in approved tentative map, the bulk of them coming with the Eastview project. You're looking at close to 1,500 units with that. The rest of the units are scattered through various subdivisions. But what this chart also includes, and this is what's important to the state, is our production. And our production has to go through a variety of income levels. So, that yellow portion there shows the income level that we're projecting these housing units to be into. And unfortunately, most of them are in the above-moderate income category. So, Eastview and most of the subdivisions are intended for above-moderate income. We are projecting a couple of subdivisions to maybe hit moderate income, and those are those small lot subdivisions. So, it's possible that Greenwood Estates and also the Veranda River Oaks is affordable to moderate-income folks. But we won't know until we get further in the process, but we're projecting them as moderate income. To me, this is the meat and potatoes of the report, and this is really what the state is looking for. And this is a summary of our housing production for this housing element cycle. And this is a summary of our housing production for this housing element cycle. And so the housing element cycle is 2014 to 2022, and for that period, we are allocated a certain number of housing units. If you look at that figure on the bottom left, that's 679 units. So the state has told us, we're responsible for that amount of units. Now, those are, you know, there's varying income levels to meet that total. So you could see on that left-hand column, very low is 131 units, low 91, and moderate 126, and then above moderate at 331. Our production, that bottom line shows our production for housing since 2014. So the first column shows 29 building permits, all in above moderate. The next year, 45. The next after that, 2016, was our busiest year at 136 building permits pulled. The following year, 2017, 71 units, and last year, a total of 38 building permits. And again, the bulk of that has all been in the above moderate income category, which is the standard single-family home. So we're exceeding our requirement for the standard above moderate, single-family home, and we are behind schedule in basically every other income category. You see on that screen, there is 14 in the low-income bracket. That is the Trail Ridge Apartments. And so what we determined is that a two-bedroom apartment at that complex would be affordable to a family of four to live in that apartment. So we're projecting that or placing that in low income. And it is non-deed restricted, though. So what that means is, there's nothing in the deed that says they have to rent to an income-eligible family. So again, this is really the portion that the state looks at carefully to see where our housing production is. And we're not required to build these homes. We're required to make land available so they can be built. So we're in compliance, even though we're short on our housing production, we're in compliance because we have land suitable for them to be built. We're already working on the next housing element cycle. You're going to see that in our budget. I'm going to budget for that. And I am expecting changes in housing law. I think everybody's been listening to the governor and how it's been important to him for cities to meet our housing requirements. And my hunch is, is that we're going to have to provide some sort of incentive for affordable projects. What that looks like, I don't know, but my belief is that we're going to have to include that in the next cycle housing element. So Table D is similar to that general plan table I showed earlier, where it lists a policy and then what the objective is, and then our progress in implementing it. So the first one listed there is allow affordable housing. But the only objective we have there is that we don't disapprove a project, nor do we place conditions that would make an affordable project unfeasible. So we haven't done that. So we're meeting our criteria. We just haven't had an affordable project brought forward. So we haven't had one presented to us that we can carry forward. The next item is incentives for affordable housing, and then the objective was to implement an ordinance allowing for density bonus, and we did that a number of years ago. So density bonus allows deviations from development standards and density requirements to allow and make an affordable project more attractive. And actually, we had, you know, you're all familiar with Galt Place on Fourth Street. They actually used density bonus to create that building. If we didn't have density bonus, we wouldn't have had that building looking like it is today. And then that last item that I'm showing there is encourage infill, and this is where the city's done a great job. We not only approved a handful of good infill projects, the city initiated an infill incentive program, which is, you know, fantastic. So we've done a good job on infill development. Other parts of the report, we'll just report out on typical activity. This shows kind of our planning commission activity, which is in that report from 2018. They made recommendations on some significant projects, you know, the Veranda River Oaks, Cardosa, the South Sacramento Habitat Conservation Plan. And then they approved also some significant projects, the Greenwood Estates project, that's the subdivision south of Rite Aid. And then it's small but mighty, the six-unit Gervitz Townhome Project, because it is an infill, and that's what we're seeking in our Old Town area. And this item was presented to the Planning Commission in February, and they recommended that the city council direct staff to file this in appropriate manner. And so that concludes staff presentation. We ask that the city council accept the report and then direct staff to file it with the appropriate state agencies, and then we're available to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, we have one. Do you, off the top of your head, do you know what moderate income is?
Yeah, there is a chart. Well, I don't know what the income bracket is, but in the back of the report, let me find it for you real quick.
All right.
So Appendix B, page 52, will actually show.
Or 223, yeah.
Will actually show, for Sacramento County and some of the other counties there, what the income brackets are and what the maximum amount they can earn. So for low income, low income is basically 50% of the median income for Sacramento County. And the median income for Sacramento County for a family of four is $80,100 per year. So a low income would typically be, well, less than 50% of that.
$40,000, okay. Thank you. Councilmember Lozano?
I do have a couple, just one question and a comment. I think it's important for the public to know that some of the stuff coming out of the governor's office right now about required housing elements in your general plan, there is some word that it's being, it's going to be tied to transportation dollars as a punishment, honestly, if you don't have your housing elements met. And I appreciate all the work you've done to show that we do do a good job in that area. And so I think it's important, as this moves on, the new administration moves on, that should the public have any issue, you know, make it known that it's not just state transportation funds. I suspect that it will then lead to federal transportation funds and things like that. So I just wanted to make that comment. The one question I did have is, as it relates to the, we have extremely low, very low, low-income, median, and moderate. What, if you know, this is kind of off the top of my head as you were talking, what percentage of the general plan is, could be affected by the, like, the extremely low income?
That's a tough one to fill. And we have, so basically, the land use that we have to accommodate for that typically is your high-density sites. So your high-density sites are more likely to allow for that. But in my experience, it's difficult to qualify for very low, and especially extremely low, without some sort of special project. So a project-based affordable housing project, like Galt Place. I mean, Galt Place met some of these requirements back in 2010, I believe, when it was built, because of the 80 units, we then have it broken down where 20% were very low, 10% extremely low, and then a portion low income. So when we have control, where we're providing some sort of assistance, or the project is getting assistance, then we can kind of make sure that there's some of that included into the project, but without, you know, deed restrictions or some involvement from a state or the city, it's difficult to, impossible to meet the extremely low requirements just through zoning.
Okay. Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Sandu?
No, thank you.
Vice Mayor?
I have a couple of questions. So when you and I were talking about this page here yesterday, you were telling me that, I think, which you said again tonight, is we're not required to build these homes, just to allow a place for them to be built.
Right.
And then if somebody wants to, then that's fine, but we, as long as we're not putting any roadblocks in front of that.
Correct.
So in regards to Councilmember Lozano's comment about that, so if something was to come down and, you know, some legislator, legislation from the governor, for example, is that going to be similar, where we're just going to have to now make more land available, or we're actually going to be required to come up with some kind of incentives to get people to actually start building something?
Well, I think, I think it's going to be both. I think there's going to come a point where we have to provide some other mechanism to help spur development of the affordable requirements. And other cities currently do it a couple of different ways. And what is big, and we don't do it in Galt, but what is big in other cities is they have an inclusionary housing requirement. And what that means is, so a subdivision like Arcadia, the 100-unit subdivision, they would have an inclusionary requirement where a percentage, 10%, 20%, whatever it is, would have to be built as affordable. So that is one way to do it, where you put the onus, basically, on a developer to meet your requirements so that the developer is providing a variety of income house, they're providing more of a variety of housing to accommodate the various incomes through a subdivision.
Do you think the cities are going to be expected to try to sub, obviously, nobody wants to build a low-income facility unless, like, let's say Section 8, for example, unless they're getting some kind of subsidy, because obviously, it doesn't, this is not, you know, doesn't make, so you think that, you think it's likely that City of California is going to be like, hey, we're going to have some incentives of money that we can get, we would hope, right?
They currently do, too. There are finance, there is financing available through the state for affordable projects. You know, we could actually have some. Galt Place, I hate to keep going back to it, but they actually received federal or state financing to help build that facility. We also participated through the redevelopment agency, but they had used a state program to actually construct that, too. So there's, there's stuff out there.
My last question was, I know there's, while we're on the discussion of housing, there's been a lot of people in the community, and I hear this a lot, you know, people saying, you know, we're in the need for a certain particular type of housing, you know, people, you know, for young adults or seniors that want to downsize their house, like, nice town homes or nice apartments, nothing, you know, low income, but something nice. So you mentioned to me that one project we have coming down the pipe that would fit that mold, even though it's not huge, is the Parlin Oaks, correct? Could you just mention that?
Yeah, Parlin Oaks, and you're going to, you'll see that at your next meeting. Planning Commission recommended that you approve Parlin Oaks. Parlin Oaks is on the vacant parcel west of Community Park in the northeast area, and that includes 144 small lot, single-family homes, so ideal for someone maybe downsizing or startup home, but then also an 80-unit apartment complex. So we're kind of excited about the project. I mean, we need apartments. I mean, it is tough to find anything to rent in the city. So we've got to, we've got to start getting some rental units here, because we do need to keep our youth here, and that is a way to do that. So we're kind of excited about it. You'll see that again.
And that's on the south, just to clarify, that's on the southwest corner of Corillian and Walnut, the big intersection.
That's correct.
Right, okay. Thank you, Chris.
You're welcome.
So, Chris, are plans for those available on your website yet, or is that?
They should be, and if they're not, let me know. I'll make sure that they are there, because it is public record, and we do, especially since it's been the Planning Commission, those documents are available online.
Perfect. Looks like a lot of work. Thank you. I don't know, even want to know how many hours that took. Is there any public comment? Thank you. So can I get a motion to review the annual 2030 Galt General Plan and Housing Element Progress Report for 2018 and direct staff to submit it to the Governor's Office of Planning and Research and the Department of Housing and Community Development in accordance with Government Code Section 65400?
I will make a motion to approve that.
If I could just make a quick suggestion, that it be to accept the set of review.
Okay, accept the review.
Thank you.
Thank you. So do we need a motion, though? And, okay, so Councilmember Sandu makes the motion?
Yes.
Second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember Farmer. Roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Farmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Lamson?
Aye. Motion for acceptance passes 4-0. Are there any communications?
None tonight.
Do you have anything to report?
Not tonight, thank you.
Okay. Start with comments by staff. Ms. Claire?
Nothing to report.
Okay. Mr. Sully?
Nothing here, thank you.
Any more, Mr. Arias?
Yeah, real quick. We are bringing the Corillian Boulevard master plan to the Public Safety Committee meeting on Monday.
Okay.
So we encourage everybody to attend. We'll get out a public notice, make sure we get as many people as we can there. We are, so the idea is to give an update on where we are, and actually, we're looking at a couple alternatives. So I think it's important that people attend that.
Thank you. Ms. Mendez?
No.
All right. Ms. Hall?
Good evening. So we are currently recruiting for the following positions: Parks Worker 1, Police Officer, Recreation Coordinator, Swim Coach, Wastewater Plant Supervisor, Waste Water System Operator 1/2, Water System Operator 1/2, Youth Sports Official for Softball. So I encourage anybody who's interested, please go to our website and apply. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Solis?
Yes, I wanted to remind council that opening day is this Saturday for our T-ball and softball program. Hopefully, forecasted to rain, but hopefully, you can still get those games in. On March 26, next Tuesday, we have the March to Good Health Event at the Galt Market. Possibly, you guys can attend. That'd be great. If not, we'll be sending something out on Facebook to have that information out.
Thank you. Chief Sockman?
Reminder that tomorrow is Coffee with a Cobb at Starbucks. It's an evening event from 5 to 7.
Okay. Mr. Palazzo?
Yes, I do have something to report for the council, mayor, members of council, executive team. And I got a script here so I can stay on track, comes the course.
Do you want to wait one minute till we get, till we get through? No?
No.
Okay.
I'd like to roll with this.
Roll.
After three years, as your city manager, I will be stepping down, effective April 2nd, 2019. I am proud of my accomplishments during my tenure, and I'm especially proud of the executive team I have had the pleasure to work with over the last three years. I'm proud of their achievements and the quality of service they provide this community. I'm looking forward to the next chapter of my life, and I will assist in smooth transition. Thank you.
Thank you. The city council appreciates Mr. Palazzo's accomplishments and thanks him for his service to the Galt community during his tenure. We are currently embarking on a strategic planning process with the newly-formed city council to establish the city's updated goals and priorities, and finding a new city manager to assist us with bringing those goals and priorities to fruition will now be one of our top priorities. Kimberly? Okay. Councilmember Lozano?
Yeah, I'd like to thank city manager Palazzo for your tenure here and wish you the best.
Vice Mayor Farmer?
Yeah, a few things. First off, good luck to Mr. Palazzo and his, and his future. I'm hoping, I'm sure he'll land somewhere that's, that's in need of his services. I went on a ride-along with Officer Slater. It was in his, actually, I went on a ride-along with Copper, his canine, and his handler, Slater. And it was interesting to go along, I haven't been out on a ride-along in years, so it was a fun opportunity. And I can report to the citizens that are watching that I feel like Galt was very safe because it was very boring. And there was, you know, it's the only time that you actually wish something would happen is when you're on a ride-along. But, but I was happy to see that nothing was going on, and I look forward to doing one again. Second of all, State of the City is Thursday at the Littleton Center. Remind people of that. And last would be, if anybody in the community willing to assist with the continued planning of the Galt Sesquicentennial 150th Celebration, we have a next committee meeting on Wednesday, March 27. So it's next Wednesday night at 6:00 PM at the Historical Society Hall. It's at 550 C Street. It's underneath the water tower, a little tiny building there. So we're going to be meeting at 6:00 PM. We're all are welcome to come and give some input. We're, we're coming up with some great ideas, and we're planning that event, so would welcome people to show up for that. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Sandu?
First of all, thank you for, city manager, for your service to the City of Galt for the last two years. Thank you.
Yes, thank you for your three years of service and input. So I'd like to get the consensus of the council, kind of, of your banner. With the banner program, I was looking at the banners that said City of Galt, and I thought, we have five city-sponsored commissions, and I would like to get the council's permission to get one that says the Galt Youth Commission of the 50 that we're purchasing, one that says Parks and Rec Commission, one that says, sorry, Galt Youth Commission, Galt Planning Commission, Galt Safety Committee, oh, Galt Beautification, and Galt Parks and Rec Commission. I believe we have five?
We have five. Six. Anyway. Above our city. City-created.
City-created commissions. Are you guys okay with that?
I think, I think that, so I had a dialogue with, with, discussed type and graphics. I think when we approved this originally, the price was contingent on them all being the same.
I had a dialogue with them also.
Okay, you could mention that.
Trust me. So I had a dialogue with them already.
Okay. Okay.
So Dan said that would be okay. Antoni?
I'm fine with it.
You guys fine with that? All right. Meeting adjourned.